Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, June 8th, 2021. This is the regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Zoning Board of Adjustment. And Mr. Avaloni, will you please call us to order?
I'd be happy to. The following meeting is being conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, and amended for 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct meetings electronically during a state of emergency.
Oh, sorry. Sorry about that.
I was reading it, then you took it. At a good notice, this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and the Asbury Park Press. All notices are in file with the Board's Secretary. In addition, a notice regarding this virtual meeting and instructions were published in the Asbury Park Press and the City of Asbury Park website as well. A copy of that notice is on file with the Board's Secretary. The notices and the conduct of this meeting are in accordance with the guidelines for virtual meetings issued by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Welcome to the zoning board meeting for June 8th, 2021. Irene, would you please call us to order?
Yes, please. And I will take role on Daniel Harris.
Yeah.
Brittany Ashman is absent. Tim Slick.
Yeah.
Jill Potter.
Here.
Wendy Glassman is also absent, or actually she is recused as well as absent. Let's put that on the record. And Catherine Minervini.
Yeah.
Bonnie Knuck.
Bonnie is absent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Bonnie is also absent. Russell Lewis is also absent, and he is also recused from this application. And Mr. Avaloni.
Here.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. So just a little bit of housekeeping issues at first. I'll make a motion to approve the amendments of the zoning board meeting of May 25th, 2021.
A second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Christopher Avaloni and a second by Daniel Harris. Everyone is eligible to vote except Ms... Oh, I'm sorry. We're going to need another second. Mr. Harris is abstained from these minutes.
Okay.
Can I get another second, please?
Can we just clarify? This is Jill Potter. Am I eligible? Because I'm not sure what was contained within those minutes.
Yes, you are. The minutes, you just have to be present at the meeting.
I know. I reviewed them earlier, but I thought there was one set where it was recused from something. So I just want to make sure that if I second it.
It may have been a resolution. A resolution, you have to be eligible to vote on the resolution in order... Or on the application in order to vote on the resolution.
Okay, I'll second it.
Is that correct, Jack? Just...
I'm sorry?
Was that correct? How I explained it to Jill?
I was looking at something. I'm sorry.
Never mind. So Jill was not eligible to vote on, I believe it was a resolution, because she was not eligible for the application voting. But the minutes, she just has to be present in order to be eligible, correct?
That's correct.
All right. All right. Thank you. So yes, Jill, you are eligible to vote on the minutes for this evening. Would you like to second?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay, great. So I have a second by Jill Potter. And everyone is eligible to vote on the minutes except for Daniel Harris, Tim Slick, and Catherine Minervini. All other members, how do you vote?
All right.
Thank you. Minutes approved of May 25th, 2021.
Thank you, Irene. So now we have one application tonight. Hope that's in Exhibit B1.
Yes, thank you, Chris.
Okay. So one application tonight, 7:05 sunset. Mr. Steinberg, you're up. Welcome back, Dr. Rao and Mr. Han. Please proceed, Mr. Steinberg. Can you give us a quick update of this application, just for the Board's attention?
Yes, I'm going to. Is Mr. Passman in?
I don't know.
I only get...
Let me see.
Irene.
I am here.
Okay. There we go.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right. Let me cut to the chase. We were here a month ago, and we heard your opinion of the application and areas of concern. As a result of that, we have filed, and I believe all of the Board members have received amended plans. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
What the amended plans have done is to remove the second-story deck above the first-floor porch. It no longer will be a deck above the first-floor porch in the front. It will be a roof, number one. Number two, we have also removed the two-and-a-half-story deck in the rear that was going to come off the rear portion of the half-story. That is gone. And contrary to the report of Ms. Miller, as I went through it, which is, I assume, under the new plans, we are keeping the stained glass window feature, which is prominent on the second story of the house and historical in nature. And we are keeping the trim and details around the front door, which we had said last month we were doing. So the report indicated we were not. But we are definitely keeping the windows, the window on the second floor, the stained glass window, and the trim around the front door. We have submitted, we are going to replace the windows that you see with double-hung windows at this point without any grids. So basically, replace them with like-kind, except for the large window on the first floor. We're going to replace that with two windows. Is that correct? On two double-hung windows to match the ones on the second floor.
That is correct.
Because we do not think we can fabricate what's there because of its size and without being something extremely costly and whether or not it's going to function properly. But other than that, we're in the same position as we were last month with the remainder of the variances request.
Thank you, Mr. Steinberg. Do you want to call your first witness?
Mr. Passman?
Yes.
Could you explain to the Board the changes that I just stated? But more specifically, you're still under oath, is that correct? Last meeting, Jack?
Don, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear the testimony about giving this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Yes, I do. Thank you.
So you have revised the plans?
Yes, so we revised the plans after the Board's concerns. And as Mr. Steinberg mentioned, we maintain the existing front porch with its roof rather than having a deck above it. Consequently, with that decision made, we eliminate what we had before. We're sliding glass doors that allowed access to that deck. So in lieu of that, we went back to the front elevation as it stands. Actually, the entire front elevation. It has a one-story front porch with a hip roof on it. We have all the windows that are present are now in this design. Even the stained glass, that long rectangular or small rectangular window in the center is being maintained. The difference is that they don't have storm windows in the new design because there are aluminum-framed storm windows over, not the stained glass, but the other two pair of windows, east and west, on that facade. And then, like Mr. Steinberg, on the first floor, where the four-foot-eight wide by five-foot-high double-hung window, we're replacing that with two double-hung windows that are a similar proportion to what's above it with a mull in between, meaning a post in between. So it looks like the traditional historical two-gang window.
Mr. Steinberg and Mr. Passman, you at last minute submitted some designs of some Anderson windows that we received that was distributed today to the Board. Am I to assume that that was the design that you intend to use for those windows? Or...
Well, we were asked to provide window details. I don't know why. But so our answer was, well, we're using typical Anderson renewals, which are replacement windows, which have a very nice profile, just like any other brand-new window. So it's the profile that someone wanted to see. I don't know why. They're not vinyl, you know, kind of cheapy windows. These are expensive replacement windows, and they have a typical double-hung appearance.
Can you share them with the Board right now, Mr. Passman? So I mean, is this the design that you're speaking of? So that we have an idea what...
The design is really reflected on the plan. That's the specific location of windows and what they look like. That was just giving you an example of what Anderson does. I don't know why that detail was requested. I don't know what the purpose of it was. But I thought, okay, here's the catalog. We're using it basically from this catalog.
So those pictures that were submitted to us today, Mr. Steinberg, are just an example of an Anderson window, not the windows that will be utilized?
Yeah, I mean, it's a typical window. In other words, it's not a casement window. It's a double-hung window. I don't know what any other detail you might want. You tell me, and we'll provide it. But that was just, okay, we're using double-hung windows from Anderson. That's it. I think everybody else uses.
I understand.
This is Jill Potter. I think the importance is where the house is. It's in a historical designated area. So throwing any type of double-hung replacement vinyl windows could be problematic. So I believe, if I remember correctly, the request was made to make sure that we're getting an idea of the design so that it fit the neighborhood and fit the house.
Well, I think the drawings show it better than any of the catalog cuts because it shows the typical sash, you know, that kind of thing that we're using.
But we're using wood. We're not using vinyl, Don. We're using wood.
Well, it's a vinyl clad on the outside. They're all vinyl clad, but it has a profile.
And is it wood on the inside? It's vinyl clad, wrapped?
Wood on the inside.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, it's what everybody uses. You know, everybody uses a clad window because if you use a wood window, you have to paint it every couple of years. That doesn't make any sense.
Right. But I think that we all understand also that there's cheaper versions of some windows out there that aren't necessarily the vinyl clad with wood on the inside. So I think that was the request, if I remember correctly.
It's not an all-vinyl window.
Right, right. Yes. I think that was the clarification that was requested.
And again, they're insulated glass, so my client has, you know, a modern window in terms of its energy efficiency.
Yep. Thank you.
What else would you like to know? I mean, I'll be glad to answer questions.
Wait, we took off the backboard.
So in the rear...
Can you share your new designs with us, Mr. Passman, so we can see as you're speaking?
I'll try to do that.
No, you don't.
Oops. One minute. Let me go back to this.
Somebody goes to boot camp.
Here we go. Okay. Latest plan, what would you like to see? The elevations are as follows. Okay, can you see that elevation sheet?
No.
It's a blank page, sir.
Excuse me?
Blank page.
You can see this page or not?
No, we have a blank page.
No.
It says, please move away from this shared application. It says I'm sharing.
Mr. Passman, if you can open the document on your computer first and then click the Share Screen green button at the bottom of the Zoom screen, I think that might work.
All right, let me try that.
And then it allows you to pick which document you want to share.
Okay, trying to do that. Can you see that?
Yes.
That's better.
Okay, there's the elevations. I can start from the south elevation in the front, which shows the double-hung windows, the stained glass window, and the other double-hung windows on the other side. Down below, where the large double-hung window previously existed, we want to replace it with these two double-hung windows.
So based on what you're saying so far, you've eliminated all the sliding glass doors on the front of the house?
Correct.
Okay.
The front door is the front door that's there, just repainted.
Yeah, Don, the answer to that is yes. You've eliminated all the sliding glass doors on the front of the house.
Yes, I said yes.
Yes.
If I scroll around to the western elevation...
And then, yeah, and I interrupted you, Don. Wait, I interrupted you. And the trim that's existing on the front door will remain there?
Yes, it will remain, just being repainted.
Yes, we know that. Okay.
I'll move to the west elevation.
So as you said, though, you're going to be retaining the stained glass window in the front. Do you have a method? You had originally mentioned that it was in disrepair. Have you figured out a way to provide better efficiency out of that stained glass window? I mean, I remember that was one of your comments, Mr. Passman.
Well, in reviewing it again, it looks like it's very salvageable, salvageable, and it will be salvaged in that position. What we can do is we can put something on the inside as almost like a storm window, which will give a better thermal capabilities.
Okay.
I mean, I can go through the other elevations if you want.
Sure, please do.
The most important one is really the rear elevation, which is facing north, where we previously had a rear deck, and now we have a dormer there instead. So we complete the hip roof with a dormer as it is existing right now. That's what it is now. It's just only extended further toward the north to cover up the addition. Other than that, the rest of it is basically the same as what it was.
I don't have any further questions for Mr. Passman. Does anybody on the Board have any further questions for Mr. Passman?
It's Jill Potter. I just have one. With regard to that front window, where the concept is to replace it with two double-hung, I took notes when somebody was originally speaking about it was too cost prohibitive to get a single giant one fabricated. Did we actually get estimates? Did we source that out? Or was that a guess based on the size?
Well, I have spoken to the general contractor who's working on this. I've worked with him for many years, and he knows windows better than anybody. And he said it's really not a good option, a very expensive option, if it's available at all. And I don't think it's really available at all. It's just oversized. I mean, I deal with a lot of window manufacturers also. Not that I've sourced it with them, but I just know practically speaking. And the other aspect of it is, even if you do, let's say, find a way to do it, you can't, it's very difficult to maneuver that window in terms of lifting and everything. It's huge. Each sash is very heavy, and it's not...
Five foot across, right? Is that the measurement? It's about five foot?
It's about five feet across.
Yeah, it's large.
Big. And actually, as it exists today, it's covered over by a wooden storm window, as are most of the first-floor windows. I don't know if they're even operable. I don't know what the condition of that window is either because they might be screwed in, and you can't even deal with it. But whatever, I mean, it's going to be replaced anyway. But just so you know, it's not an operable window right now.
Understood. Thank you.
Mr. Passman, just some questions regarding the stormwater management system. I don't see on your renderings any gutter system or any downspouts or anything showing how you're remediating the stormwater. Can you please give us some kind of idea of how you're going to remediate it and exactly where you plan to send all the water to?
It wasn't, it wasn't my understanding there was any need for remediation. The actual roof area is exactly the same as what's there today. There will be gutters and downspouts. They'll be taken to the same location that they are today.
I think we have some...
There's no increase. There's no increase in water runoff from this work.
I appreciate that, Mr. Passman. But I think, you know, we can give you some direction through our engineer, our Board engineer, that maybe can suggest some ways to remediate the stormwater. Jack, would it be possible for you to swear in Doug?
Doug? I can't see him, but I'm assuming he's out there.
He's out there.
Stop the share.
No, that's okay.
Doug, please...
I'm here, Jack.
Okay, please raise your right hand. Oh, great. You solemnly swear the testimony about giving this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record and your affiliation with the Board.
Doug Cleland, Insight Engineering, Board Engineer.
Okay.
All right. So yeah, in terms of drainage impacts, after reviewing the plans and hearing Mr. Passman's testimony, you know, there is some new coverage being created, but it's limited to the coverage created by the new deck. So, you know, something we've done in the past, there is a simple solution to it, which, you know, providing some type of gravel bed underneath the deck to mitigate some of that runoff always is a good idea. But in this situation, there is an existing basement. You know, so that should be avoided at all costs. You know, infiltrating water right next to the basement, we certainly wouldn't want to cause any issues there. But, you know, after looking at everything, it seems like the simplest solution would be, you know, to provide some type of drywell, whether it's perforated type or stone, a minimum of 10 feet away from the house and away from property lines to store the 100-year design storm for the new increase in impervious coverage. You know, it wasn't there in the existing condition. You know, so it certainly would be creating additional runoff. And after looking at the plans, it seems like, well, it's evident that the proposed addition is comparable in size to the deck. It's even slightly larger. So if the roof runoff could be collected in the downspouts from the new addition and just be piped underground to a drywell, it certainly would mitigate the impacts from the new runoff created by the deck. So, you know, it doesn't seem like there is an engineer involved with the plan at this time. But, you know, a simple engineering plan, you know, put together by a licensed engineer, which included, you know, soil testing to just confirm that, you know, this can actually infiltrate into the ground, I think would suffice. And, you know, should the application be approved, we'd certainly be willing to, you know, work with whatever engineer was involved to, you know, satisfy that condition.
Mr. Steinberg, Mr. Passman, would you be amenable to that?
Don, that works, doesn't it?
I guess. I didn't think it would be necessary. I think the gravel bed underneath the deck would be enough just because there doesn't seem to be much... I've been there after a rain. Doesn't seem like there's a lot of ponding or anything going on. But, you know, I don't know if it's a recommendation or a requirement. They're asking, you've been asked if you agree to is it a condition? I think that's the intent of the Chairman's question.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Jack.
And to reemphasize...
I would say, yes. I would assume that the applicant would agree to that.
It would also protect any water infiltration into the basement.
Obviously.
Yeah, so then, yes, we'll stipulate to that condition.
Thank you, Mark.
It'd be part of the building.
Thank you, Mr. Steinberg.
Plans will be filed.
Okay.
All right. That's pretty much my questions. Does anybody else from the Board have any further questions for Mr. Passman?
No, thank you.
Okay, let's open it up to the Board professionals.
I have nothing.
And Mr. Avaloni, before we do, can, just for the record, can we mark the revised elevations on the screen in two evidence? I'm not sure where they stopped last time, but the previous meeting, we had the last exhibit marked A001. So this will be A002, Architectural Plans Revised, dated 5/12/21.
Thank you, Irene.
Thank you.
All right. Jack, maybe you can swear in Donna and Doug, if he has any further questions.
Sure. Donna, you want to raise your right hand, please?
Okay.
Okay. You solemnly swear the testimony about giving this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Get your name and your affiliation with the Board.
Donna Miller, Board Planner. Okay. So I do want to clarify. And I'm not sure if it's easier to share my screen or Mr. Passman wants to continue to do screen sharing. If he could... I guess I'll share screen then.
Why don't you go ahead, just so we can see what you want to show?
Okay, so let me go to Sheet... Three. Yes. All right. So Irene, you said open the document first and then share screen?
Yes.
Yes, I believe.
Click on Share Screen and then choose the document that you want to share, just so no one sees the rest of your desktop.
Awesome. Okay, here we go.
Perfect.
Okay, so this is Sheet 3 of, and I've zoomed in really tight, so pardon me while I just zoom over here. So this is Sheet 3 of the Architectural Plans, Revision Date 5/12/21. And, okay, so I'm scrolling over. So this is the second-floor plan that I'm zoomed in on. And there is a note, and it corresponds to a little triangle symbol with the number 5, which is correlated to the May revision date. And it says, "Note: Existing windows will be replaced with new insulated windows matching the existing sizes and functions unless noted otherwise." So that Note 5 is applied along the front facade of the building, shown here, existing windows, existing stained glass, existing windows, existing roof. So the plans state that these three windows are to be replaced with new insulated windows that match the size and function of the existing. So, Mr. Passman, are you telling us that you're not going to replace the existing stained glass window with an insulated window?
Okay, so the number 5 represents the revision number 5. So anything with a triangle and number 5 is a revision from the previous submission.
Okay.
Okay. So the note remains that the existing windows are going to be replaced with new windows of a similar function, meaning they're double-hung windows. The note, unless otherwise noted. And therefore, the one that says existing stained glass is remaining, it's remaining. That's not being replaced because it says existing stained glass. It should have said to remain, but it's to remain.
Yes, it should have.
Justifying that it's going to remain.
Very good. So now I'm going to move over to Sheet 4, which is the elevation drawing.
Right.
And so this is zoomed in on the second floor and the new dormer in the attic space.
That's existing dormer.
Right. And so you have the notations bubbled over here on the left-hand side, where it talks about the, you know, new asphalt shingles, new seven-inch exposed vinyl siding gray. There's a note about the trim over the porch, the columns, et cetera. So on page 6 of my report... Sorry, 7. Number C. number C, this is 3C, yeah, 3.2C. I call out the decorative window trim around the stained glass window. So the existing stained glass window has a decorative trim, and you're proposing new vinyl siding on that elevation. What's happening with that trim?
Are you talking about the stained glass on the second floor?
On the stained glass window.
On the second floor?
Yes.
Okay, that trim is all new trim.
Sorry?
But you're, if you're looking at your letter C on page 7 on your report.
Yeah.
It talks, it's talking about decorative trim associated with the stained glass window.
It's describing the trim around the window.
But it has a photograph.
On the first floor around the door. But I'm talking about the trim around the window, which is shown in the picture of the stained glass window on page 6.
That's what confused us. All right. Now we're going to trim that.
Well, we were not going to trim it with that same little scroll work on top, just because it overlaps the freeze board. And I don't know if we'll be able to get that exact same trim in a, and it doesn't, exact same trim. That wasn't our, we weren't going to do that. If we didn't have to, I mean, we could maybe rescue that and paint it if you so desire. If you think it's that much of a.
Tell us what you're going to do, and the board will decide whether you deserve a variance for if you're not going to retain it.
The plan does not show it being retained. But if the board so desires, we'll try to do the best that we can. I don't know what that's made of, I haven't been up there, so it's hard for me to say. And it's hard sometimes to retrieve that. I mean, you know, it could be rotted. I don't know what the condition is.
I understand.
I think, Mr. Passman, if at all possible, if you could rescue it. If it's not possible, then I understand, and I'm sure the board would understand. But I think an attempt to rescue the trim is worthwhile. Yes, we will try. And we'll stipulate that if it's doable, we will rescue it and reuse it. I appreciate that.
Who's going to make that determination?
Pardon me?
Who's going to make that determination?
Well, if we can't do it, okay, who do we report back to? Is the question, okay?
Mr. Chair, would you feel about coordinating with the city historian on that to see if he could offer some guidance or assistance to the applicant on?
I'm not even sure that would be something that we could potentially put in these resolutions. Jack, having Mr. Baumgartner get involved, is that even something that we could stipulate?
Never done it.
Right.
Should come back and have it come back to the board or some member of the board or some.
I think come back to the board is more appropriate.
If the board professional that it's going to go back to wants to talk to Mr. Baumgartner about, can he give us some advice on how to retain it, that's fine.
If we, then I would suggest that if we can't retain it, okay, then we would so advise the chairman, and then you can determine how you want to confirm that, I guess. At this point, we're going to agree to retain it if possible. I agree. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Steinberg. I don't know if I'm the most appropriate. No, no, I would direct a letter to you and explain why we couldn't, for instance. I appreciate that. And then you would direct it to your professionals to make that determination, or they would confirm it with you that it's not possible to retain, and that would be the end of it. Or if they say no, we'd like to see it, and we're going, you know, we'll provide whatever proofs that we can. But at this point, I think we can stipulate that we will make every attempt to save it, and if not, we will report back to the board. Thank you, Mark. I think that's fine.
Okay, I think that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Donna.
I'm going to stop sharing, right?
Yes. All right, so Doug, do you have any further questions for the applicant? Nope. You're muted, Doug, so I couldn't get.
Sorry about that. No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, great. So I guess at this point, we open it up to the general public for Mr. Passman. If there's anybody in attendance from the public, I'm going to say there isn't. Is there, Arina?
I do not show any attendees from the public or any hands raised.
Okay, so. Okay, in that case, it's back to me. That's true. Yeah. And that's basically our case. I think we presented, and I'll go over that in a little bit of a summation. We presented all the testimony before as to the other required variances. We revised the plans, which I really truly believe is the direction that we're given by the board, the best of our ability. And we're down to a couple variances, okay? The minimum side yard setback is less than half a foot from the required minimum setback as we provided before. The building coverage exceeds the permitted, but that includes, I believe, the open deck as we had before. And there is a, there's a little bit of a dichotomy, because when I spoke to Michelle, she doesn't count the decks for building coverage. But the ordinance is in the process of being changed to eliminate them as coverage. And if they were gone, we would be very much closer to the actual required. But we'd still technically need a variance today if that's necessary. The building height is going to remain as it is, but just extended further back at the same height. And the minimum floor ratio, which I think is also going away under the new ordinance, I believe, is substantially caused by the calculation of the basement as a full floor. And as we provide testimony before, the maximum height of this basement is the minimum height of seven feet. And the applicants do not plan to do anything with the basement except storage. If they were to renovate the basement and drop the ceiling, they couldn't put a light in. It would be below seven feet. So we had presented that testimony before. I'm not sure if there's any other variances required, and we respectfully request that the matter be approved as now amended. So I appreciate your final comments, Mr. Steinberg. I have to, I appreciate all the changes that were made by the applicant, Dr. Rao and Mr. Han. Thank you so much for hearing the board and making all those changes. We appreciate that. Personally, I think the design of the house, keeping it in line with the historic nature of this particular part of Asbury is very appreciated. And those are my comments at this point, and I'm in favor of the project. Anyone else on the board would like to make a comment?
Hi, it's Jill. I just want to echo what Chris said. The fact that our comments and feedback were heard and came back with a plan that's much more in line with the neighborhood and the historic nature of that area, it's very much appreciated. Thank you. I'm in favor of this project as it stands now. And thank you for salvaging the window and the door trim. It's important to that block. I walk and run by there all the time, and that house sticks out and is very memorable.
Thank you, Jill. Anyone else from the board have any comments for this application?
Yeah, Dan Harris, I have made, since you turned in your application, made numerous trips by there. I was blocked off while they were working on the streets a couple times, so I couldn't even walk up there to look. But yeah, it's a beautiful house as it is. And thank you for making those changes. I do approve it, and welcome to Asbury Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any further?
I'm just echoing, this is Timothy Slick, I'm just echoing what the other board members have said. I appreciate the changes, and I like the application now.
This is Catherine Minervini, and I am in agreement with the other board members and echo the same sentiments. Thank you very much to the owners and the architect. And I'm in favor of this project as well.
What about the lawyer? You didn't thank the lawyer.
We never get any thanks.
So based on all those comments, I'm going to make them, yes, Mr. Serpico?
I don't think we asked for public comment, we asked for cross-examination.
Okay, you're quite correct.
We don't want to skip over that.
No, no. Do we have anybody, Arina, in the public who wish to make a comment as well on this application?
I do not show any public attendees. Jack, for the record, do you want me to share my screen so that it could be put on record that there are no attendees?
No, I will take your verbal representation.
Okay.
I trust you.
Thanks for trusting me.
Okay, so then, so then we're all good, Jack?
Yes.
All right, so based on that, I'll make a motion to approve the application 705 Sunset Avenue with all the conditions that we applied just recently on it regarding wastewater management, trying to retain the architectural features of the stained glass window if possible. What other conditions have we mentioned, Jack?
That's, those were the two key.
Okay.
Of course, the revised plans.
Yes.
And there was complete clarification, I believe, after Donna and Don engaged in their colloquy. And I think we're clear on what's going to be done at the property.
Okay. So based on that, I make a motion to approve the application with those conditions.
I second it with those stipulations and conditions.
Great, I have a motion by Christopher Avaloni and a second by Jill Potter. Daniel Harris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Tim Slick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Catherine Minervini?
Yes.
And finally, Christopher Avaloni.
Yes, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Unanimously approved.
Thank you very much for your attention. Good night. Good night, Dr. Rao, Mr. Han, and Mr. Steinberg and Mr. Passman.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Night, everyone. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, and so before we adjourn, Mr. Avaloni, I'm sorry, I'm just going to share on the screen that our last virtual meeting will be on June 22, 2021. The link and the information is on the screen now. I am not sure that we have an application on that date, so it may actually be canceled.
Okay, so.
But we will put it on the website as soon as we have that information.
That's terrific. So on that, I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
Great, I have a motion by Christopher Avaloni and a second by Daniel Harris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Meeting adjourned at 7:44 PM. Thank you, everyone, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.